Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I need a motion for the approval of the meeting agenda. First by Matt, second by Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? None. Motion carried. I need the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on October 16th, 2024. First by Steve, second by Matt, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Five, presentation awards, acknowledgements and correspondence, 5.1. We have the senior trip presentation, but Michelle can't be here. We have the itinerary in front of us. Do we have any questions? Okay, I need a motion for approval, first by Mary, second by Russ. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Congrats to the seniors that are going to Boston. 5.2, the 2023 to 2024 academic update by Krista Lewis.
All right, good evening. Before we begin, I'd like to first introduce, for those of you who may not know, I think most people in the room probably do. Ashley Stoughton is an administrative intern with us this year. She's working with me at the district level two days a week, and she's also working with Kelly Zelke at the high school the other three. So Ashley is my co-presenter this evening, so we're going to tag team this. Tonight, we're going to be presenting on the New York State Grades 3 through 8 Assessments and the Regents' Results from last year, the 23-24 school year. Just before, as a reminder before we begin, last year was our first year of computer-based testing at Grades 5 and Grade 8. So we took those exams for math, for ELA and for science at the 5th and 8th grade level by computer, while our other grade levels, 3 through 8, were remaining paper-based. This year, we will be computer-based for all grade levels. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley, who's going to start with our ELA results.
Thank you, Krista, and good evening. He lied to me. So we're going to begin this evening by looking at the results of our ELA assessment. Some of the highlights, if you look, at Grade 3, we were slightly above the Wayne Fingerlake BOSI's average. Our 6th grade improved their performance from 2023, when they were 19th out of the 25 districts, to last year, they are now 10th out of 25 districts. Our cohort performance from 2023 to 2024 for 5th to 6th, 6th to 7th and 7th to 8th either maintained or slightly increased. Our focus remains on increasing the percentages of students in each grade level, scoring a Level 3 or 4 on this assessment as our data overall showed a decrease in proficiency levels as compared to the 2022 to 2023 school year.
I just want to add in that while our focus this evening is on Levels 3 and 4, which Level 3 is proficient, a Level 4 would be mastery. What's not reflected here are students scoring at Levels 1 and 2. The state provided us, they provide multi-years of what they call a performance indicator or a performance index. That's what we use. It's basically when students score each of those levels, a 1, 2, 3 or 4, they're worth different values, if you will. We put that into a calculation, and it helps us determine, in addition to our proficiency levels, are we showing growth or movement for students between a Level 1 to a Level 2, right? A 2 to a 3 or 3 to a 4. So I do want to point out that although we did see a decrease in certain grade levels, in levels of proficiency, we did see, according to our performance index, we had some goals that were laid out by New York State. They don't use these goals anymore, but they do provide them so that we can use them locally. We did see, for ELA, Lincoln School and Perkins School, they measure actually the 3rd graders that come from each school that take the ELA assessment. They divide them out, right? And say, these are the 3rd graders that came from Perkins, these are the 3rd graders that came from Lincoln, and they do that calculation. So at Lincoln School and Perkins School, we actually met or exceeded that performance indicator goal for the New York State ELA assessment. And at the middle school, we exceeded that goal as well. So that's just additional information that I wanted to put in there because we do look at all levels. We know we have to move those students from Levels 1 to 2, as well as increase our levels of proficiency.
So now, we're going to look at each grade level compared to districts within our BOSI's region. So when you look at these charts, the red box represents Newark. As Krista mentioned prior, Levels 3 and 4 are proficiency levels, and those are represented by the blue bars of the graph. Looking at our performance as one of 25 districts in the Wayne Fingerlake's BOSI's region, our 3rd grade ranked 10 out of 25, and 4th grade ranked 16th. So again, you can see the red box, which highlights Newark students, and the star to the farthest right is the BOSI's average. Looking particularly at the blue bars, you can see how our performance compared to our districts in our region. Here, you'll see our 5th and 6th grade ELA performance compared to the BOSI's average for each grade level. 5th grade ranked 23rd, 6th grade, as we said before, ranked 10th. It's important to note that at the 6th grade level, our ranking from 22 to 23, to 2023 to 24 school year, increased from 19th to 10th, which was our biggest comparative jump in performance at any grade level. We just got to bounce it around. Here is our ELA performances for Grades 7 and 8. Overall, at each grade level, as you look at the charts, you can get an idea of the varied levels of performance throughout the entire region. We look forward to continued growth and improvement as we implement the components of our strategic plan and DSEP. Our results in ELA, and as you will find in other subject areas we will share tonight, reinforce the need to stay focused on providing high-quality Tier 1 instruction that's differentiated and targeted to the needs of our students, while we also work to provide additional direct support for students with larger deficits and gaps through our Tier 2 and Tier 3 academic interventions. Each year, we administer the iReady diagnostic screening to students in Grades K through 8. This year, a new tool on iReady is called Projected Proficiency. This shows, based on our students' performance on the iReady screening that they just finished this fall, the percentage of students that are projected to score at Levels 3 and 4 on this upcoming ELA state assessment. You can see that they have proficiency with no additional growth through the year where we would be. The projection if they reach typical growth, which is about what they expect to happen across one year, and then the projection if they reach their stretch growth. The slide shows Grades 3 through 5 projected proficiencies here. And here, you will see 6 through 8. Again, with the new projected proficiency tool.
That tool, we've had a lot of discussion in the past at this level around our iReady screening and how we use that to diagnose where our students are at. It's a tool that we use three times a year in the fall, at the end of January, and then again at the end of the school year. We really use that to make determinations. It's one of our data points when it comes to identifying academic intervention services for our students. It also helps our teachers at a Tier 1 level identify where are those strengths and where are those areas of need. They can use that tool to group students with similar needs. So it's a multi-use tool, but the way in which it predicts or it correlates to state assessment performance has been something that locally we've tried to figure out, as have many districts that are using iReady. So it's really nice this year that they've taken that guesswork out. And so when they rolled the tool out, they basically said, we know this is information that's important for districts. We all know that you're trying to develop your own systems to, you know, identify at what level students need to score. So they've basically done the legwork for us. So we're really excited this year to have that data. And talking with Sue last week, and we'll be meeting with principals coming up, we'll actually be using that data for some goal-setting ourselves, right? We know that if our students don't make any continued growth, then we're really not doing our jobs, right? We're here each year for our students to make growth at each grade level. So we're always going to be striving for that typical growth, but we also recognize that we can't stop there, right? Typical growth is one year's worth of growth. And if we have gaps, we have students that are behind, we have to help to accelerate their progress. So we'll be using that and finding some sweet spots, if you will, between that typical growth and that stretch goal growth as well. So more conversations to come throughout the year on that. Exciting tool. We're going to shift next to our New York State Math Assessments. Very similarly to ELA, there are some highlights that we see here. Again, at the 3rd grade level, we did see an increase in proficiency, those Levels 3 and 4, compared to previous years. And you'll see that almost 50% or 48% showed proficiency. Of particular concern are really the decreases in proficiency that we see at the other grade levels, right? The Levels 3 and 4. At the 8th grade level, I do want to point out and remind you that we do have some students at 8th grade that take Algebra 1. We had two sections last year of Algebra 1. Those students take a different exam. They take the Regents' exam. They're not included in this data. Looking at 5th and 8th grade, you know, again, reminding those, that first year of computer-based testing. I will say, and I know we talked a little bit about this last year, that this was our first year. The math test has multiple tools that students need to utilize and practice with. It's not yet perfected. It's better. It's definitely better than those first years when we weren't computer-based. They're making improvements each year with that. But I think what we took away is that we really need to start off the school year this year having students practice. So we actually have the practice website up and running. It's loaded on students' computers. They have access to all of the tools. Erin Sweet is our Technology Integration Coach. He's been meeting with grade levels. He's there to support students. So I do think that having that awareness this year will help our students, and it will become, hopefully, more of just a daily part of what they do and get used to. I'm not saying that we can clearly attribute our performance at those levels to computer-based testing. There's certainly multiple factors involved, but it is an interesting thought to think about those were two grade levels where that was our first year. Here, we have our performance in math compared to districts in our Wayne Fingerlake's BOSI's region. Again, our district is indicated with the red box or rectangle, and you can see the BOSI's average that starred at the end of each chart. So as we look at our performance in math compared to other districts in our region, we see some highlights at 3rd grade, where we ranked 6th out of 25 districts, and that's well within that upper quadrant, if you will. 4th grade saw a slight decrease in performance from 22-23 to 23-24. We were 18th out of 25 districts. And again, you can really see that varied performance across our region. We wanted to include that because so often, we talk about how we do, but unless we can really put that in context, even to say like how we performed out of the other districts, to see it visually really gives us an idea of that performance and where we are as a region, and as well as a district. Looking at our performance at 5th and 6th grade as well, and you'll see also at Grades 7 and 8 on the next slide, math is really where our biggest concerns lie at this point. And I would say that's true across really the 3 through 8 level. I think it's fair to say that, you know, really across the region, there are several, you know, districts that share in similar performance, but at the same time, there are districts that are significantly outperforming our students when it comes to levels of proficiency and mastery. And that's really where our focus needs to be, on those instructional practices at a Tier 1 level that support student achievement of the math learning standards and ensuring that our academic intervention services are really supporting our students that have those larger gaps in particular. We've got to get our systems tight and refined and make sure that we're really honing in continuously on the needs of those students. And then here's our performance at 7th and 8th grade. Again, our 8th grade data is reflective of those students that took the 8th grade assessment, not that Regents' exam. But again, areas of concern remain in 7th and 8th grade. Taking a look again, because I think it's important to reflect on that as well, the performance indicator piece that shows Levels 1 and 2 and 3 and 4, like our overall performance, like we looked at ELA. I just want to note that, based on those goals that, again, were set out by NICE Ed for multiple years, our goals for last year at Lincoln, Perkins and Kelly were met and exceeded. And at Lincoln and Perkins, I will say, well exceeded. For example, the goal was 85.6 at Lincoln, and we were 140.63. And the goal at Perkins was 81.7. We were 143.55, right? And then again, at Kelly, not as large of a gap, but certainly met that goal. From 99.6 as the goal, we were 108.83. So that's encouraging to us. It tells us that we may not have seen the growth in proficiency, but we are moving students from Levels 1 to Level 2. And that's important as well to keep in mind in the overall picture, right? Kids cannot jump from a Level 1 to a Level 4, right? Without some steps in between. And here again is our iReady predictor for math. On this first slide, we see Grades 3, 4 and 5, and how our students are projected to score on that math assessment. Again, if they make no additional growth, if they meet typical growth, and if they're on track to meet kind of their stretch goal or go beyond that one year of growth. And then we'll see the same thing here for Grades 6, 7 and 8. The next piece that was new, not only because it was computer-based for us, but new because it was really a completely new exam, and our instructional subcommittees had an opportunity to actually take a look at some of those released questions from both exams to really feel that difference, is our New York State Science Assessments. So these were new last spring, based on the New York State Science Learning Standards. And all students across New York State were required to take the exam in a computer-based format, okay? We don't have any regional assessment data at this point. We just have our own local data. However, there's been quite a bit of chatter across the state about the science exam. Part of it is the newness, that shift in the level of rigor that's really required by the new standards. And the preliminary data that was shared from New York State was 35% of students across the state showed proficiency, so Levels 3 or 4, and 34% of 8th grade. So we haven't received any confirmed data at this point. I don't know if we will receive more. I would imagine when we get our school report card data that's official. But NICE Ed did share, and I wanted to read this, in their introduction of the new science learning standards, that as with any set of instructional standards, they need to be rigorous. They need to demand a balance of conceptual understanding and application and represent a significant level of achievement in science that will enable students to successfully transition to post-secondary education in the workforce. So in line with those learning standards, it's accurate that there is more reading on the test as students must employ the practices of scientists and engineers, which requires them to analyze data and use models, among other skills. Essentially, this is a very different test than the previous science assessments, and the need to focus on building foundational reading and reading comprehension skills, along with higher-level thinking skills, to analyze, problem-solve and synthesize is critical for us to support higher levels of performance on this assessment moving forward. So this really aligns with, again, many of the conversations that we've had around those shifts in standards and in instructional practices that need to accompany that as we move forward. Any questions on this portion before we shift to the Regents? I know that's a lot of information being presented. All right, I'm going to give it back to Ashley to talk a little bit more about the Regents' exams.
So moving on to the Regents at the 9 through 12 level, to carry over from a change in our science test for Grades 5 through 8, if you take a look at this chart, you will see where Regents' exams have either recently changed or will be recently, or will be upcoming with a different test, with different standards. So as we transition, we thought it would be helpful to take a look at these changes. As you can see, the changes are moving up, and now our high school is in the midst of making the curricular and instructional shifts that are needed to support the increased levels of rigor that are represented in the new learning standards. So last year was our Algebra 1. Two years ago was our U.S. History. This spring, we have two new science and one new math. And then the following year will be the new English and the rest of our sciences as well. The whole presentation and how the instruction occurs in the classroom has even shifted greatly, especially in science. Three, right?
This is a large shift across all of our content areas. I would say that there's a similar thread when we have these discussions, right? It's all about higher-level thinking. It's all about collaboration. As teachers, it's about really moving into that facilitator role versus teacher-led instruction, allowing students to really grapple and problem-solve and get to those higher levels. The science in particular is really about real world. Like, we mentioned scientists and engineers, right? And that's really the model that they've used to implement the practices that are needed for these standards to be achieved. So a science lesson is going to start with phenomena. It's going to start with something that is, presents a problem or something to think about. It's not the teacher saying, today, we're going to learn about. It's the teacher saying, look at this, or study this. Think about it independently. Think about it and collaborate with a group. Come up with your own wonderings, your noticing's. If it's a problem, come up with some potential solutions to that problem. And then it's that backwards thinking, right? And really thinking about what drives that, what's the vocabulary? So we're presenting that, kind of that reality to students first, and then stepping back and allowing them to go deeper. That sounds a lot like our math practices and the shifts as well, right? So there's a real common thread there between math and science. And I would say another common thread is really between ELA and social studies, where we're seeing a lot of those commonalities. So the standards are there very intentionally. And I would say, overall, it's lifting the rigor up and really getting to that higher-level critical thinking types of skills.
Can I say something? So again, it's going to be getting through the context of things, that higher level of thinking, evaluation, and knowing the verbiage to get to where you're going.
So we first wanted to take a look at what we refer to as our five major Regents' exams, which are the exams required for graduation in a traditional pathway. You will note that last year, there was no option to pass with a special appeal, as there had been in the previous two years. The data for 23 and 24 simply represents the percentage of students scoring a 65 or above on each exam. Global and U.S. History and Government saw significant increases in performance. Algebra 1 was the first administration in June of the new exam. And our English 11 Regents was administered to all students in January. So the results shown here are for that January administration only. Students who did not pass at that time or who wished to retake the exam for a higher score had that opportunity to retake it in June, and in turn, August as well.
We've had some internal discussion around the timing of this exam and when we've selected to give it in January. Our decision has been purposeful, because we do have, as you can see, we get a good percentage of students to really pass that exam. Where we can't stop is ensuring that those students that pass with lower scores have an opportunity to potentially retake for a higher score, right? Are we pushing them to get to those higher levels? And although it's great to have success at the end of January for many of our students, some of our students, their first test or their first time through is not getting them to those levels, right? And then they're working for the next half of the school year to actually pass that exam. We're not the only school that does that, but we are in the minority when it comes to that. So I think that's an area where we're going to need to review and continue discussion around whether to continue that practice or move it to June.
So looking at the same five exams, we're now looking at the mastery performance, which would be a scale score of 85 or above. As you can see here, this is an area of concern for us across all subject areas. While our focus with these exams is to support students in achieving proficiency or passing, mastery really reflects a higher level of readiness, and we need to put our efforts into ensuring that our students have the opportunities to master learning standards. Our work in professional learning communities supports this as we identify levels of performance on data points connected to specific standards, and then plan instruction to improve student performance at each level. If we do this well, we are keeping a close eye on the students who are showing proficiency and targeting instruction to provide additional opportunities for them to extend their learning, to practice and truly master the standards. We will know they are improving and that more students are achieving mastery through ongoing review and progress monitoring and preparation for these exams. The additional time provided on Wednesdays this year is invaluable to this process. This chart shows all of our Regents' data from the 2016-17 school year through last year, 2023-24. Please remember that Regents' exams were not administered for two years in a row, 2020 and 2021. Also, as we noted, most exams have changed significantly or are currently shifting this year or next, based on new learning standards. This makes it challenging to truly compare results across multiple years. With that said, our current data shows some increases in performances from the 2022 to 23 school year, noted in green, for geometry, global and U.S. History. Algebra 2, ELA, chemistry and physics decreased, and performance in Earth Science, Living Environment and Algebra 1 were similar to the 22-23 school year. We'll take a look at the bar graphs in comparison to the region and the BOSI's average. And here, you can see in our social studies Regents, the results across the Wayne Fingerlake's region was higher, and our local data is similar, with U.S. History in particularly, or in particular, excuse me, surpassing the BOSI's average. We see more variation overall in performance in Algebra 1 on the new exam. Algebra 1 performance on this chart reflects both those two sections of middle school and the high school combined data. and the high school combined data. Performance for the middle school cohort overall was lower than prior years. Our overall performance on Algebra I is in the lower quadrant for our region. Algebra II saw a significant decrease in performance last year, and it is reflected here as well and particularly noted in our performance compared in the BOSI's average. Again, a much larger variation of performance was seen across the region in Geometry, which remains an area of focus for us as we prepare for a changing exam this spring. Living Environment data shown here is again for our middle school and high school combined. Overall, we ranked 17th out of 25 districts in our region, and this was an increase from the 22-23 school year, even though our performance remained similar to the previous year. Our Chemistry results decreased last year due to a variety of factors. And while we have just this year left to assess on these current standards before the exam shifts, we do feel that consistency that we have this year in staffing and with the ongoing progress monitoring and targeted instruction occurring, that we will see increased results this year. As with Living Environment, Earth Science performance remained similar to the previous year. Compared to the districts in our region, our performance was slightly below the BOSI's average. As we move on to Physics, you'll notice first that there are fewer bars. That is because not every school was able to offer this course to their students. Our Physics results were disheartening, and due to the timing of this exam, we truly believe that this data is not necessarily reflective of the best performance of our students, nor the instructional efforts that were made throughout the year.
So in summary, when we think about our 3 through 8 exams, as well as our Regents exams and our performance overall, we know that there are several factors that really do impact student performance. So some of these things include alignment of curriculum and local assessments to learning standards. When those standards change, it's more than just having them change on paper. It's also the how, be how, how to get those standards to really come to life, right? And that causes shifts in our teaching practices as well. Consistent delivery of quality Tier One instruction. Heard us mention differentiation. We've talked a lot about targeted instruction based on the learning needs of students using that data. That's our focus on those early-release Wednesdays through our PLC or Professional Learning Community work. We need to engage our students in discourse and high levels of thinking, putting that work on the students, right? Teacher as facilitator. And again, thinking about our students with disabilities in particular. And that is an area of focus for us. That is a subgroup across the district that we do pay close attention to, that we know are at risk. And we're really focused on specially-designed instruction based on the students' needs. So really using what's in that IEP to design that individualized instruction. And for our students who are in those consultant teacher classroom settings, really making sure that our co-teaching models allow all students to really receive quality instruction that's engaging, that's rigorous, and just with those right levels of scaffolding. Not overscaffolding, but giving them what they need to really move forward. Consistency of staffing is a big factor in improving our student performance. Time for teachers to collaborate and engage in ongoing formative assessment, data analysis, and action planning. Again, I think we're providing that this year with that extra time on Wednesday. Attendance is a big factor. Time in class, right? Attendance is a little bit different than time in class. Showing up to school, showing up to class, right? Multi-tiered systems of support from an academic standpoint, as well as a social-emotional learning standpoint, right? What supports are we providing for our students? Are they consistent? Are they targeted to what they need? Are our systems clean and refined and really working at high levels, where we're truly meeting the needs and closing those gaps? Support for student behavior. Some of that happens through our MTSS system as well, right? But it's the day-to-day in the classroom. Do we have solid, supportive, safe learning environments where we're really focused on learning? High-quality professional learning that's differentiated to support new and veteran teachers. When we do training, if you were here many years ago, we did a lot of training on learning targets and success criteria, almost at nauseam for some of our veteran teachers. We've had a large number of new staff members come in. They didn't have that same level of training. Now we have to try to find ways to make sure that they get what they need while we try to move everybody forward and focus on things like differentiation and use of data to target instruction. So it's an ongoing cycle to meet the needs of our staff, when that staff changes as well. Engaging relevant alternative learning opportunities for students to really make connections within the community and to expand upon their interests. So what are we giving them as a reason, right? What makes learning relevant, meaningful, gives them something to really look forward to, or to be a goal? I think a lot of that is connected strongly to those pathways that'll be coming as we make those shifts with the new graduation requirements over the next coming years. But what are we doing now, right? What do we need more of? What can we do differently to meet the needs of our students in that area? Strong communication, and I think that goes district-wide amongst our administrators, to our staff, our staff to our students, our staff to our families, our students to our families, right? All, everybody's connected. We're all part of the same team. And then that leads to the partnerships with families, with the community to support our students. So some of this might sound familiar because it's really the work that we're focused on as part of our strategic plan and our District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, or our DCP. So we have the three big rocks. We have our Academic Program in Big Rock I. We have the Culture and Climate in Big Rock II. And then we have our School, Community, and Family Partnerships as part of Big Rock III. Those are our major actions. And it's really an all-in, comprehensive approach that's necessary to really move this data. So we can't pinpoint just one thing, right? It's all of these big rocks, all of those actions across all three, working simultaneously and cohesively together, that's gonna really help us to continue to make these shifts. Any questions?
Do the P-Tech kids take the same test if they're not taking college courses?
I believe they have some CTE certification exams that they have, and they have college-level credit courses that they may take. So they may take a college-level exam for that credit. So not necessarily all of the same. There are requirements right now, though, for those basic Regents exams as well, I think, as they kind of work both, both avenues. Other questions or wonderings before we close? Boy. Well, you know, being an ac- Yeah. Yeah. I think in my mind, you know, academics for me are always something at the forefront, and I really do truly believe, I know we use that, we say it over and over, targeted instruction, right? What are we doing to really target the needs of our students? How do we know our students as learners? How do we know how they're doing? How are we really utilizing that formative assessment data to respond to their needs? I think instructionally, that is the core of the work. That's where we need to stay focused. I think a lot of pieces are needed to get us there, right? Continued professional learning. Again, those, that learning environment, the classrooms that are, you know, safe, supportive, focused on learning, making sure that everybody's needs are met. The social-emotional learning, you can't discount. But at the end of the day, all of the supports that we put in place that can help us to really implement that targeted instruction, I believe will help us to meet the needs of our kids. That would be helpful. It's a, it's a definitely a lot of change. And those changes take time. They take professional learning. They take money and a lot of focus. It's, we wish we could stop, right? Like, and just say, "We've got it, we've got now a year where we don't have to teach anything. All we have to do is learn this new piece, and we'll be ready to roll it out the following year." But it doesn't stop, right? You're teaching the old standards while you're preparing for the new, and then you're making a shift over. So it's a, it's a big shift every time you see on that chart that something changes or is about to change, for sure. Yes. The comparative data for... So, and, so publicly, no. Yeah. There's an agreement. Yes. Yep. Yeah. Yep. Good question. Any other questions? And I know our principals are here this evening. We appreciate their support. Is there anything that any of you would like to add or say? Pretty much, pretty much covered it? Yep. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Krista. Six, public comment. At this time, public comments are invited from individuals who have signed up with our district clerk by noon on the day of the board meeting and are speaking on a topic with, that pertains to an agenda item. Speakers must be a district resident, property owner, employee, and/or a parent of a current student. Wait to be called by the board presidents and approach the podium to speak using the microphone. Identify yourself. Limit remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a group concern and supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Conduct themselves in a respectful or civil manner in accordance with the District Code of Conduct and all applicable laws, regulations, and policies. Personal comments toward a member of the community, staff, student, or Board of Education member will not be considered appropriate. A representative will respond to each individual within five business days. Please note, the board has the right to determine whether particular subjects are inappropriate for public comments. We have no public comments. Seven, old business, new business issues of public interest. 7.1, respond, acknowledge of previous public comment. We have none. Eight, verbal reports. 8.1, instructional. I think you're good.
I will just keep it very brief and say this, this Friday is a half-day for our students. And at this 6:12 level, it is a half-day for professional learning. So a lot of the work that we just mentioned, we'll be really working from that professional learning aspect on Friday to target some of those needs.
Thank you. 8.2 is Finance. We don't have any report from Gregory. 8.3, Human Resources. Christine?
You'll see on the website, thank you to Kyle for putting it up. We're participating in the Wayne County Job Fair. So that's Monday, the 18th, 1 to 3, right here in Newark. It's Technology Parkway, so over by like FLCC area, right? I have to, I'll have to put it in MapQuest.
8.4, Superintendent Susan.
I'm gonna start with budgeting in Greg's absence regarding just the process of which we're moving forward with purchase orders. Greg has put out a new timeline that it went to directors and administrators on Monday for their review. The timelines are much tighter than they've been previously, but we're gonna use a pilot year to see if this process allows us to project the budget and fund balance as we get closer to the end of the year with greater accuracy. So we're gonna go through that. We also have a clear-cut budget calendar that you will be receiving in the Weekend Letter this weekend. And just a memo that you'll be briefed on regarding everything that our administrators and directors have saw regarding the new budget process. So that will be sent over the weekend. Secondly, Russ, you said, and the state needs to be consistent. And Krista put out a chart that Ashley covered regarding all of the Regents and when they will be changing. And today, the state education announced New York Inspires, a plan to transform education in New York State. And so with that, NICE had presented its robust timeline and implementation plan aimed at transforming education. And it does talk about how they are aligning their recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation measures. So Regents exams to earn a diploma would end after the 26-27 school year with this new recommendation. And passing Regents exams would, would remain as an option for students to complete graduation requirements if adopted. So therefore, they're looking at four significant transformations that they're putting into practice. One, the first one, is adopting the portrait of a graduate first and foremost. And then, secondly, looking at redefining the credits and the learning experiences for our kids and what that will look like. Thirdly, they're gonna sunset diploma assessment requirements, moving to one diploma for all students in New York State as that last piece. And so as they do that, they are gonna have a significant phased approach that will allow for thorough planning, professional learning opportunities, and stakeholder feedback as we transition from what we've now seen to where we are now going. And again, they're gonna have that distinct focus on allocating time for that planning. And they do lay out a pretty significant timeline of what that looks like, with the planning year being fall 2024 to summer of 2025. So that will now be on the plate. With Phase 1 of the installation starting in fall 2025 to the summer of 2027. Phase 2, which is the initial implementation, fall 2027 to summer 2029. And full implementation and scaling up from fall 2029 onward. So that freshman cohort coming in in fall 2029 would start with the full gamut of everything moving forward. So more to come. This was just released, and we just received this today, again, to the board. There is a full, and for the community, New York Inspires, a plan to transform education in, in New York State that you can find right on NICE's website. And we'll be sharing this in the Weekend Letter for your review. You're welcome.
Well, thank you. Nine, review approval of the consent agenda with the addendum. I need a motion. First, Steve. Second, Matt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? None? Motion carried. Ten, Board Development Committee reports monitoring of the board. 10.1, Board Committee meetings and related updates. Legislative, we will be meeting this coming up weekend, do you believe? Is that the second Saturday? Yes. And finalizing our state position paper. We tweaked it a little bit more. So we're finalizing it this weekend and then moving on to the federal position paper. NISBA. Miranda, Mary, and myself, we attended the NISBA conference in New York City. Had a great time, learned a lot. You wanna share thoughts? Miranda?
It was a very immersive event. We were able to attend many summ- That was, you know, great at showing how we can implement financial planning from K through 12 and helping to nap, kids to navigate, you know, life skills.
Yep. Yep. Mary?
I thought it was great. Obviously. I attended one on phones. Can't wait to share all that information of a school who really reduced it almost to zero. It was wonderful.
And I attended a session on how to ask questions as a board member, and I really liked that. So I'll share the template and my notes with my board so that you guys can read. Russ?
I did the conference digitally.
Yep.
So it started Monday morning at eight o'clock and went till five o'clock and stopped. And when they had the seminars, they just were little, like 20-minute sessions where they would come into their studio and kind of just do it.
Oh.
And it was just bang, bang. It was, it was an interesting way to do it, but you miss the, you know, connections with all of the people that had the conference and asking all the questions that, you know, what did your board do and how's that work?
The networking.
That's, that's the one thing.
It was very good.
Yep. Did you get to see Sophie? Or is it Sophia or is it Sophie? I forgot. The robot?
The AI.
Yeah, we, they showed the, some excerpts of the night before with Sophie, and I sent it to my son, and he goes, oh, that's all garbage. He does it.
He does that? Cool. Cool. All right. Four county, we have our meeting with Brian Fessler for professional development. Yeah. Forgot what date it was, but, yeah, 25th. Okay. And then Wayne Finger Lakes BOSI's. Steve?
Yeah. The BOSI's board had a retreat on Monday, so they had their meeting earlier in the day. I had some things going on, so I didn't make it. But according to their agenda, it didn't look like there were any presentations, anything. I think it was just a quick meeting to, just to prove what they needed to improve, so.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. 10.2, board of education subcommittee reports. Audit, next week? Policy, next week? Okay. Facilities, that's going to be coming up. Instructional committee, I know, but we just had it. Steve? Miranda?
Yeah, a lot of what we spoke about was Krista's presentation, so we dug into that quite a bit. And also, as she mentioned, the shifts and the changes in the teaching style and the testing style. We got a chance to look at the tests for fifth and eighth grade science. Those look kind of fun. So our focus is on getting an up-close view of the hands-on type teaching, you know, we're shifting from the lecture to the hands-on. So a couple weeks, we're going to visit a science class in the high school and then later at Kelly School in January. And instead of, you know, last year, our meetings were just visit 20 minutes in a class here and there and there and there. We're going to get a little more in-depth here and see a science lesson, so.
All the way through. Yep. Okay. Co-curricular? Did, when?
I missed it. No, it was, it wasn't on my calendar for some reason.
Cancelled for our next meeting, and we need a new schedule? Just go to the next one.
Okay. All right. 10.3, the first reading of the following revised policies. 65-50 leaves of absence and 72-20 graduation requirements. But that's going to have to change again. All of that. I need a motion first. Russ? Second, Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? None. Motion carried. First reading of the following new policy, 74-70 student government. I need a first. Mary? Second. Ross? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Students, if you would like to come up and get signatures, anybody can sign. You can go to anybody.
I just want to congratulate our soccer team on an amazing season that they had and wish the best of luck for girls swimming and diving in sectionals. And an amazing job to the drama club and their production that happened. And we look forward to the upcoming Veterans Day performance for the band and choir. And again, the Veterans Day concert is Thursday. 7:30.
Okay. So, anything more? You're good? You're good? Okay. Sorry. Had to get my scoop. 11, proposed future agendas and ongoing discussions. I'm going to mention the next two meetings. 11.1 is going to be the high school presentation on November 20th. And then 11.2, what does TIG, which is Trauma, Illness, and Grief do? And that's going to be on December 4th with Jen Sensibak. I need a motion for adjournment. First, Mary. Second, Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Have a good night.
You too.